A little bit out of order, I'm going to ask our Elmhurst Police and Fire Honor Guard to do the presentation of the colors at this time.
Do we stand up?
Should we put these down?
No.
Should we mark it?
That's it.
All the stands for the guard. Prepare to post colors. Post. Recolor. Who's that? Arms.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Face. Forward. Arms.
Please be seated. officials, but I don't know, we've kind of slimmed down the council, we'll operate more efficiently this way, I think. Anyway, so I will call you up one at a time, and I will ask each of the newly elected officials when they're being sworn in to please ask your family to come up and join in the administration of the oath.
Good idea, Chris.
Thank you. First, first word, Alderman-elect and Alderman already, Jennifer Veremis. Watch out behind, everyone, everyone, we got to make it.
It's time. Amy, will you help me?
Oh, you can't. We'll stand here. Alderman Veremis, you want to tell us who you have with you tonight?
Thank you, I have my mom, Anna Maria, my cousin Chris, my husband Joe, my cousin Linda, Vicky, my cousin Anthony, and my cousin Teagan, on my Italian side.
Okay, you ladies will proceed. Raise your right hand, please. I, Jennifer Veremis
I, Jennifer Veremis
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will discharge the duties
That I will discharge the duties
A first word Alderman
Of first word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do one, no, you're with me, and then I'm going to step out, because you won't remember after a few years, so.
Just one with the, Kim, we do one just with the family.
Can you step out? Half a step out, it's your turn. Don't walk very long.
Nice move.
You're away. I'm looking forward.
Right here, give me.
All right. Karen Shenko. Oh, I saw your husband, anyone else, bring your family up.
Sure, I have my parents Eva and John, my son Aiden, and my husband Paul.
You ready?
Sure.
Raise your right hand. I, Karen Shenko
I, Karen Shenko
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will discharge the duties
That I will discharge the duties
A second word Alderman
Of second word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Third word, Mr. Bram. Oh, right in front of you. Now, you've done this so many times, I'm not even going to tell you what it is, you just have to do it yourself. Are you ready to begin? Oh, yep, of course, whoever you got, friends, family?
I have to swing around some, you come on this side, just swing around a little bit more, there we go. A little bit more, I might have to put the flags apart for you.
All right. Michael, you want to tell us who you have with you tonight?
Well, I'll just make it short and just say that these are all my dear friends that are just like family for me, so I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. You ready? I, Michael Bram
I, Michael Bram
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
The chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
A third word Alderman
Of third word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
You're ready, man.
Thank you.
Nobody be hiding back there, right? Lori Lori, have to hide. I want these two together for the first shot. And then everybody else around, so if you were hiding back there and I can't see you, you're allowed to see them in pictures. I'm going to divide you. Maybe in the corner.
Do you have some family, friends with you tonight, Alderman?
Not as many as that crowd. I thought I had a big family, but only half of them are here, and they're not as numerous.
I'll stand with you. All right, do you want to tell us who you have here?
Yes, I have my husband Mark, my daughter Anyella, and my son Carter. Missing two other children, but.
Well, we have to do this tonight, so we'll go.
Hopefully they'll win.
Why don't you guys come over here? Great, you ready?
I, Noel Toledo
I, Noel Toledo
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will discharge the duties
That I will discharge the duties
A fourth word Alderman
A fourth word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
All right, as your former fifth ward Alderman, I will stand with you in solidarity. All right, who do you have with you?
I have Scott Levin.
Well, welcome.
Raise your right hand. I, James Nudera
I, James Nudera
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will discharge the duties
That I will discharge the duties
A fifth word Alderman
A fifth word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Nardini, come on up, bring your family. Well, do you want to tell us who you have with you tonight?
I do, I have my immediate family, Leonardo, my mom, retired York English teacher, Dr. Gloria Nardini, my son Lorenzo Nardini, and my beautiful wife Heidi Nardini.
Have to keep the English perfect, then. All right, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
Very good.
I, Guido Nardini
I, Guido Nardini
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Sixth word Alderman
Of sixth word Alderman
To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask where Mr. Erby is, come on up.
Thank you, this is my mother-in-law Christine Barrett, my wife Jennifer, this is my oldest daughter Lauren, this is Annie Barrett, this is John's wife, who's my brother-in-law, and this is my son Christopher, I've got one daughter at ISU who's graduating in a week or two, Alyssa, and then I got two older boys, Matthew and Taylor, who are in two different cities.
Are you ready to begin?
I am.
All right. I, Rex Erby
I, Rex Erby
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
The Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
And the chartered laws of the City of Elmhurst
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
Seventh word Alderman
Seventh word Alderman
Promoted you already. To the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. There's that white over there.
What am I going to do?
Ready to retreat the colors?
All right, let's make it official, Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Hill
Here.
Shenko
Here.
Jensen
Here.
Bram
Here.
Cahill
Here.
Toledo
Here.
Park
Here.
Nudera
Here.
Bastido
Here.
Nardini
Here.
Brennan
Here.
Erby
Here.
Deuter
Here.
Veremis
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent, we have a quorum. Even though the mayor's remarks are later, I want to welcome all of the newly sworn-in Aldermen, those who are returning. I'm looking forward to very productive years. I think for the new Aldermen who have never served, you will find it to be a very rewarding experience. We've always worked as a team, and I believe we will continue to do that, and rely on your fellow Aldermen and me, and we're down to business. So, with that, Clerk Tamer, is there anyone that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the clerk? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none, Clerk Tamer, public forum, is anyone signed up for public forum?
Nobody's signed up, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign up for a public forum but would like to use the public forum at this point? Raise your hand. There being none. I'm just going to tell the studio audience where we're going, so you don't feel lost or confused, or the new Aldermen. So, we are going to, we have a consent agenda, and the clerk will read the entire consent agenda. Afterwards, unless an Alderman pulls off a couple of items, we'll vote on the consent agenda as a whole. If you want to stay, you'd be most welcome, if you feel, and I don't think it's going to be that long of a meeting, but if you want to leave while we're doing the consent agenda reading, please feel free to do so. With that, Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
Five point one, minutes of the executive session, meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on April 17th, 2023. Five point two, minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on April 17th, 2023. Five point three, accounts payable, May 1st, 2023, $1,829,722.71. Five point four, committee appointments, 2023 through 2025. Five point five, an ordinance granting a variation from the front yard setback requirement to the property commonly known as 517, 517 South Fairfield Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point six, an ordinance granting a variation from the corner side yard setback requirement for the property commonly known as 984 South Spring Road, Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point seven, an ordinance granting an amended conditional use permit to the property commonly known as 506 West North Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point eight, an ordinance suspending the annual percentage consumer price index increase for July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, as provided in section 36.10, Article 2, entitled Retail Licenses of Chapter 36, entitled Liquor of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, Ann Cook Counties, Illinois. Five point nine, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement by and between Island Construction, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point 10, an ordinance vacating the alley right-of-way directly adjacent to 240 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. Five eleven, an ordinance rezoning, approving a preliminary plat of subdivision and granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development for the construction of town homes on the property commonly known as 240 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point 12, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Elmhurst Chamber of Commerce and Industry and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. Five point 13, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between David B. Han and Associates Limited and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. Five point 14, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the mutual aid box alarm system. And five point 15, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional engineering services agreement by and between Baxter and Woodman, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst for the 2023 wastewater flow meter monitoring project.
All right, before I ask Bernie, before I go further, there will be immediately following the council coffee and some snacks out there, so if you leave and you want to wait around, we won't be too long, I should say. Now, that being said, is there any item on the consent agenda that any Alderman would like to remove, either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Jensen.
Five point one, five point nine, five point one oh, and five point 11.
Five nine, five ten, five eleven. Any other items? All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items five point nine, five point 10, and five point 11. Motion by Alderman Erby, second by Alderman Braun, Bram, excuse me.
We just met.
Sorry, Mick. Thank you. All right, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Hill
I.
Shenko
I.
Jensen
I.
Bram
I.
Cahill
I.
Toledo
I.
Park
I.
Nudera
I.
Bastido
I.
Nardini
I.
Brennan
I.
Erby
I.
Deuter
I.
Veremis
I.
Fourteen i's, zero nays.
Fourteen i's, zero nays, the consent agenda minus five point nine, five point 10, and five 11 passes. We're going to now go to five point nine, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement by and between Island Construction, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
All right, and for the new council members, these are, these three items, well, maybe you want to explain your reason for pulling first.
I'm pulling them to vote present to prevent the appearance of a conflict of interest.
All right, and these are ordinances that follow the adoption of report where we approved of all of the substance of this, so this is now the part of the process where our attorney has drafted the ordinance to make it legally take effect. So, we're going to do these one at a time, but your reason for pulling them is the same.
Same for all three.
Very good. Any other discussion on five point nine? Clerk Tamer?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know who to ask for this, because it's a new committee. Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Deuter, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Hill
I.
Shenko
I.
Jensen
Present.
Bram
I.
Cahill
I.
Toledo
I.
Park
I.
Nudera
I.
Bastido
I.
Nardini
I.
Brennan
I.
Erby
I.
Deuter
I.
Veremis
I.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present, five point nine is adopted. Five ten, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance vacating the alley right-of-way directly adjacent to 240 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois.
You have a motion to put this before the council, Alderman Deuter, second Alderman Veremis. Any discussion other than Alderman Jensen's? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Hill
I.
Shenko
I.
Jensen
Present.
Bram
I.
Cahill
I.
Toledo
I.
Park
I.
Nudera
I.
Bastido
I.
Nardini
I.
Brennan
I.
Erby
I.
Deuter
I.
Veremis
I.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present, five point one oh is adopted. On to five 11, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning, approving a preliminary plat of subdivision and granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development for the construction of town homes on the property commonly known as 240 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois.
You have a motion to put this before the council, Alderman Deuter, second Alderman Veremis. Any discussion on this ordinance? There being none, Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Hill
I.
Shenko
I.
Jensen
Present.
Bram
I.
Cahill
I.
Toledo
I.
Park
I.
Nudera
I.
Bastido
I.
Nardini
I.
Brennan
I.
Erby
I.
Deuter
I.
Veremis
I.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present.
Thirteen i's, zero nays, one present, five point one one is adopted. On to reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Alderman Veremis, you wanted to make an announcement before, would you like to do it at this time?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, May 20th, Spring Road will be having their pet parade. Registration is now open, it's a family-friendly event, all the activities are free, there'll be crafts for kids, food, pupachinos, awards for best pet tricks. So, you can register, we have several posters around town, you can register with the QR code for your pet to participate, or you can go to, I believe it's Spring Road, springroad.com and register there. Thank you.
On to reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials, Mayor Levin, first of all- officials. Mayor Levin, first of all, if you didn't get the opportunity to attend the Umbrella Sky Art Display, one of the three of them is up already, and I think the others are following. It's right at the Schiller Walkway. It was a nice mini-block party and some music to kick that off. That will be there for some time. We'll have one opening near the museum campus, and one also where the 255 building is down the street. Heritage Foundation just celebrated their 15th anniversary, and there's a very fine portrait that's been restored. You'll see an article in the paper, and so if you get a opportunity, stop by our historical museum for that. The Elmhurst Bike and Walk Group is having a Bike Ride and Safety Day on Sunday, May 21st, at the Wild Meadows Trace. That would be 9:00 a.m. to noon. And I believe is it this week in the Pancake Breakfast? Fire Department Pancake Breakfast is Sunday, May 7th, at Fire Station Number Two. That's the south one on York Street. Breakfast, family fun, presentation of annual report, fire safety and equipment demos, and a tour of the fire station. It's a lot of fun, free breakfast, why not? That's all for me. City Manager.
Thank you. Just two items tonight. Reminder for all residents who own and house vehicles in town today, actually, yesterday was the deadline to have your vehicle sticker attached to your windshield. So if you haven't, we have them available here, of course. The discount time is over for that, and they are now full price. And then the other item is this Saturday will be the final spring cleanup day, and that is for residents who have a Friday pickup.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports or recommendations? Right. On to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Alderman Bram, second by Alderman Shenko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.